Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. And thank you for attending tonight's meeting. We have a number of guest speakers with us. And thank you to the members of the board for attending tonight's meeting. We move straight on into the agenda. And number one is housekeeping. Um, James is by the door, should there be a quiet? And James will lead us out into the door. And item number two on the agenda is apologies for absence. We have apologies from-
Councillors Linda Elliott and Councillor Christine Bell.
Can we all agree those apologies? Thank you. Item three is declarations of interest. Does any member wish to clear an interest to any item? James?
Um, it's just a interest under the members' national funds, non-pro per unit.
Okay, thank you. We move on to item four, the chairman's announcements. Um, at the weekend, um, councillor Alison Ford, myself and Margie were at the um National Association of Block Councillors AGM. Um, it was a very interesting meeting and full of bright ideas and ways going forward. Um, today, a number of councillors in this room attended the funeral of Mary Wilkinson. And can I just say, Mary was a councillor here. And and we did have a moment's silence at the last meeting, but just to say the funeral was today and it was just as Mary would have wanted. And I have no other announcements. I'll hand over to Margie.
Thank you. But it's it's been a really busy month, but a lot of it has been work in the background this month. There's been a lot of getting ready for meetings and budget planning workshops, um, change over our sort of IT systems, the telephones, which I think are working well.
I agree.
Um, I also attended the debt conference at Chesley Street, which was really, really helpful, really good. And again, on Saturday was at the AGM for the Dalk, which is a great opportunity to get all the the councils to, you know, town and parish councils together to discuss various issues that sort of go across the board. That's been great.
Thank you. We move on to things.
No.
We move on to item six, and we have carbon homes, the H2G requests presentations.
Do you mind if I sit down here? And so hello, thank you very much. So I'm Stacey Dobson. I work for Carbon Homes Community Investment Team. So thanks so much for having us. And I just felt it was a really fitting time to come and do an update, considering all the work that we'll be doing in Stanley. And bit of a background, so I'm, um, I worked for Carbon Homes on suicide previously for the last eighteen years in Stanley, so know it really well. I'm also a resident, so I feel like really, really lucky and privileged to be part of this work, like really. It's 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 a privilege to be like so close to that project. So a bit of a background with our place making mission and a couple of years ago, we we started our, we embarked our place mission to strengthen our 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 strategy, our strategy really, but pillars of our strategy are customers, homes in place and place. Was one of the pillars that were needed to strengthen. So this bit of work sort of links to to the strategic colour of place. So a couple of years ago, we embarked on our place making mission and we identified two carbon impact areas. So one being Stanley, the other one being Biker and Newcastle. So we chose those areas because the high numbers of stock that carbon have in the area. So one of all properties in Stanley is a carbon property. So we were real uncut in the community. So that's why we chose chose Biker as well, because of the Biker wall. And we have, you know, hundreds of properties on the Biker wall. And second reason, the the levels of deprivation in Stanley and in Biker, it was needed. And and thirdly, the the strength of the community sector in Stanley and the third sector, and we were pushing on an open door with the voluntary sector. So we knew that that sort of collaborative work would work in Stanley and Biker. So casting my back to a year ago, a few of you in the room were at our event at Stanley Skills Hub. So that's when we launched our Stanley Action Plan. And and that was like a bit of a call out for, just like a bit of a coalition of the willing, really. So like, you know, who's who's with us, who's gonna sort of support our work? And and partners came and supported our work and sort of pledged their, um, this for our work. So that was a year ago. This in this November, we've got a face-to-face stakeholder meeting, which will be a celebration event for that annual report that we're gonna, that we're gonna sort of celebrate all of the successes that we've delivered in the last year. If anyone wants to copy the action plan, give us a shout, but hopefully we'll see some of you, some of you there at the face-to-face event, remember, if you wanna come along, just give us a shout and we'll, I'd be invited. I think it'll be a good event. So some project updates over the last year. And the food market is probably one of our biggest successes over the last year. So again, a year ago, I attended a a market that was commissioned by John County Council. They'd commissioned Baton Rouge to deliver some food markets in County Durham. And Stanley was one of them and it was it was held on thirty first of October, the Halloween market. And it was amazing. And I went to see a personal cathedy with my family. Well, this is absolutely unreal for Stanley Front Street. There was a thousand, you know, a thousand, a thousand people on the front street and entertainment and it was just really the atmosphere. So we reached out, I know you and and just listened if there were people that would do that again for us. So we commissioned it to do for and April, June, August and October. And a little, um, a little few little stuff I've got around that. So we've seen over six thousand visitors to all four markets and since April. Over fifty percent of the people that were surveyed said that, um, they visited another front street business when they were at the food market, which is what we want to be want that, you know, the high street to to benefit from that, from those events. And the survey people had said that they made it made them feel proud to be to be from Stanley. So all good stuff. We are supporting Stanley Town Council's event in December. So we're gonna be sort of supporting the food market element of the of the Sichuan event that used to normally happen. And and next year, we get NECA funding to deliver, um, more market spending next year. So they're gonna be even bigger and better than than this year. Just widening the reach. So we're working with Baton Rouge at the minute to figure out who's our target audience, what we do well, what we can do, what we can do better, um, in what means sort of for the wider Stanley piece. So our shutter artwork, um, sorry Leah, that was a, I took that, I did these slides before the finisher, sorry. Um, so again, about front street, high street renewal and finding place. And we we started this piece of work with the view that we were gonna target empty shops on Stanley Front Street, which had to shut us down all the time. It's a lot easier said than done, um, finding out who owned empty properties on Stanley Front Street. We worked with the council, the economic redevelopment team, so Mitch and Julie. And obviously we've been involved in his team and we we, um, that was the dream, wasn't it? And then it just became really, really difficult to find out who owned them, getting in touch with the absentee landlords. So we sort of shifted and we said, any front street business that just wants to engage with carbon's work and our place, our place making work. So we've done our offices. We took their carpets, we took Pitbull Dragon and Packed House and Enter Reck, who are gonna be the next ones on the list. So we commissioned four artists, three of them were local to County Durham and and one of them was international. And and we we really struggled with to justify in that international artist coming to Stanley, but we thought, you know, we've got the local element, we've got the local artists that we commissioned and this international artist was so was had a specialism with working with schoolchildren. So we he was in that, that's his work on carbon's office. So we're really pleased with all the work so far. And so, yeah, that watch out for packed houses and come soon. It's probably something that we're looking to do more of, because I think the community engagement that we had from that and was really positive and people were walking past, Leah, and all that. You gave a few comments to us about and like positive messaging and asking if we're doing more, asking if, you know, asking if their business could be next. So it's something that we might be looking at next year. So watch this space and obviously keep an eye out for the shutters as well. So we've got a number of other projects that we've, um, that we've enabled as well. So building self-leefer, a conflict-based charity who do a lot of work in Stanley. So they're working with, um, some local students in South Stanley Primary and NDA about like heritage and celebration of Stanley piece of work. They've created some podcasts from some local people, from our, she's from Stanley originally. So that's gonna be, um, a piece of work that hopefully the hoarding on the board school is gonna have a bit of a timeline of Stanley. Um, it's gonna be the next phase of that work on the on the on the hoarding. So we're hoping that that's gonna be linked to that project. You're right, North are, um, an arts organisation, um, who are working with some schoolchildren to create a song for Stanley. It's called Stanley Sing, the project. And so the great Christian Joseph's primary school and Silver Friends, who are our sort of face-to-face element at Silverstone. And, um, that's a song for Stanley. Don't know what, don't know how that's gonna, I don't know what it's gonna be like, but that's gonna be performed at the Christmas market as well. And and that's that's a really nice, nice project. Lumiere commissioned, um, so supported an installation, some carbon homes supported a Lumiere installation. So that was a project called Glimmer, and I think it's like lanterns that have been made by the community that are gonna be displayed. It's Cookfield Gardens and Shildon Broken Motion Museum. And it's a bit of an offshoot from the main installation at Durham Lumiere. So I would be thrilled to be part of that. And and the Girls Network, this is a really good one. So Girls Network is a, you know, a charity, national charity that works with girls. And to sort of real aspirations and confidence and give them sort of so many opportunities through mentoring. So the partner of girls with a mentor, um, who, you know, sort of just face-to-face mentor and in school time with the with the support from the Girls Network. And so we're gonna do it in NDA. And our contractor Regen has supported that work through their social value commitment. So it's 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 a big social value commitment that we're getting them to support for a three-year partnership. So so thirty thousand pounds that would have been locked from Regen. So it's really good news for people living in Stanley. You know, that work is being delivered in Stanley by that contractor. And they'd give over thirty thousand pounds back to that project. So it's a real success. So the boards school, um, bit of a turn point last week. So we've had demolition, um, approval from actual England and that was the final sort of stage. So we expect that to to continue, you know, through November. Um, but, you know, health and safety and structural precautions are at the heart of everything that we're doing over there. So, um, we've we've communicated that that to businesses, to Beemish Court, um, sporting scheme, to the back of the property. And but we feel like we've we've consulted through all the stages. So, um, that was the final sort of letter that we were able to, um, to deliver and we've offered, obviously, our our support with that. And we'll be back in touch, you know, at the end of the year to give give it the next timeline for that for that project. And I think that's that's it, a bit of a whistle-stop tour for for place work in Stanley. So I don't know if anyone's got any questions or recommendations?
I live on fine spot, I'm pretty clean. And there's some parkway houses there, so people that not very sociable to them. And one of them is totally wrecked and I reported this to your people. And the last winter, the door wouldn't allow her in.
Okay.
She got back to us and said there's a big hole in the ceiling and one of theirs is but I heard nothing more about it. Do you know anything about it? Ninety-five, thank you.
No, I don't work at the housing team, but I will take their comments and I'll ask them, I'll ask the team that work.
She never got back to us again.
Do you wanna give us your, do you wanna give us your deals at the end? Just so you're, you're even addressing everything that, now I'm speaking away and we'll, we'll-
Also, the the actual Stanley Front Street, the the market itself, it used to be on a Thursday.
Yeah.
It was massive. Now you've only got two two things there. Why why is this? Are the rates too high or something for people to come?
Oh, the the Thursday market?
Aye, the big one.
Or that's something that, again, that we're not-
It used to be a lot still there.
Oh, yeah, no, I obviously am from Stanley, but I'm on a Saturday as well. Um, can't comment on the traditional market that I know John Noble, so he he looked after that.
That's right.
And can't comment on reasons why that market sort of died and dead, for want of a, want of a better word, but
It's a bit of a sense.
Probably, probably rates, probably it's just the way that people are using the front street and high street and and shopping habits. I mean, I'm assuming that's, I mean, yeah, maybe.
Okay.
It's something that was, you know, we have had comments about, you know, I know somebody who has a market, who did have a market stall on Stanley Front Street and she made some really good comments around, are we supporting the existing market? What are we doing to sort of get the existing market involved in the work that we do on on streets? So it is something that we into existing stores and ask them if they wanna, you know, come and join us on a, on the new market day.
Hope.
Yeah, something that works that we are mindful of. But the fine part thing, I'll honestly wanna, you know, email through Alex or whoever and I'll, I can pick it up. I'll send it to you. Yeah, cool.
Yes.
Yes. We mentioned dual court school. You've gone a bit down, but obviously you have, um, when we were at the what's going to be in place when you got it done.
So we did an extensive consultation, um, was it the year before last? I think it was like a year before last even, um, when we acquired it, um, and we spoke to people face-to-face, we spoke to people online, we spoke to people at workshops that were office. So we we felt as if, you know, we've got a breadth of comments from the community. Um, the sort of the consensus from the community was that it was a, um, a sales and community, something that was community focused, that was gonna be a new build. And the the plans obviously to demolish were off the back of the age and condition of the property and the cost for refurb. It wasn't something that we wanted to do, but it was something that we had to do. And so it'll be a a rebuild, because you know, community focus. And but in the meantime, it's gonna be a site for the next four years, um, until we sort of unlock some funding and in our plans to do it, start on site. So in November, we actually, we're actually having a meeting around, like a meanwhile, that could be and some some soft, like some soft landscaping, some communal space, some green space, some community garden. And sort of ideas with that. So we've got a session with all of our partners in November. And what is gonna essentially, you're right, gonna be a site for the next, um, four years. And that's when, you know, that's, and I think that's why it's so important to like, keep businesses engaged on the front street, which we have done, obviously, over the last few years. We've made sure that businesses are the first to know that we've about the demolition plans, Beemish Street residents were the first to know about the demolition plans and businesses as well. And and Beemish Court, because they have looked on that ISO for like the last couple of years. So we've been really mindful that that's gonna be, you know, it's gonna be a really, a really big piece of work on the front street. So
I get everything you're saying, but my worry is four years, a long time, and it's urban and it's terrible. It's level. It's not one of you that expects that, I think, that it looks like.
Yeah, that's why we're, we're always trying to follow me, my use. Because that's what, you know, we're aware of. It's gonna be a, it's gonna be a site until until sort of speeds in the ground testing in the next four years. So and I'm hoping that, obviously, that 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 session that we have in November, Margie, with partners is gonna be and it's gonna be lead product and figuring out what what the community want. I know the school have sort of expressed interest that they would love some green space, plenty of councils, allotments, um, project, you know, that it could complement that, it could complement just for women, you know, we've thought, we've got, we've tested the waters with lots of partners, it's part of our consultation. And that green spaces is a, is something. So watch this space again, literally, watch, watch that space.
Are there any other questions, Susan?
Yeah. So when you go through all the research all over the country and the research shows that high streets are dying. And and the best models to bring high streets back to life is by making part of it residential.
Hmm.
So I only look at that part.
It was something that was was part of the consultation. It was something that housing was just not something that the community was saying that they wanted.
Well, and adult services are saying that they need it in Durham.
Uh-huh. I know that's a, that's, I know that they're their conversations that I know that that have happened with with the council and with our, our sort of senior leadership team. And I know that housing has been revisited a number of times in this process. And and you know, it's probably, and people probably do think housing, we're a housing provider, I know it's our bread and butter, it's something that we probably think, oh, it's and I see lots of comments online around it's gonna be housing. At this moment in time, there's no plan for housing. And but
But they're all gonna be flats above the units. Sorry. They're all gonna be flats above the education units.
No, there's no plans for housing at all on that side. You know, we've got flats above our carbon skills hub. Um, and again, we're, you know, the community, when we asked them about housing, whatever, which way that looks like, you know, housing for old people, housing for younger people. And it was something that was just people didn't, people didn't want. So we, that's what we, you know, we've took, we've took into what the community have said. And but I know their conversations, like you mentioned adult services there, I know that they have been happening with our senior leadership team. So I think the conversations are not pretty good. So I think it's something that could be on the cards still, if it's something that, you know, our executive team. I think, and I think four years is a long time, obviously, for this meanwhile, used to be, it could pivot, you know, it could be something that isn't on the cards now, but in the next four years, it could, it could pivot. It's just a moment's thought.
Like I say, if you looked all the research on high streets all over the country because of, you know, online shopping and people getting shot and delivering. It was just getting smaller and smaller and smaller. And so they're saying to to regenerate the high street to try and get like, um, coves back where you can sit and have a meal and things like that is to make of it pedestrianite, of it residential. And then you're gonna bring people back in on the night time as well.
So many comments around, so many comments around, um, putting a road back through the, through the high street, so many comments around that. Um,
I wouldn't.
And some people love, some people love it, you know, like the the half and back to, you know, when Stanley was a thrive on front street and they always talk about the road, always think of Stanley Front Street. And I mean, it's something that, I mean, I don't think it's a lot, that is on the card. That isn't in carbon's powers. Because if you remember like carbons, this place work that we're doing. It's about working with partners and we can't, you know, we're a housing provider, we can't do it all on our own. And I feel like we've, we've done a really good job so far in you know, getting partners on board. And I like to think that Durham County Council's sort of commitment to Stanley is, you know, hopefully on the back of carbon's great work that we've been doing and, um, a coalition of the willing and getting people on board and, and both. Yeah, I can't, the housing thing, I can't, I can't comment on, but I know that it's not something, it isn't something that's on the cards as listed, but those conversations above my head could be something that we're, that we may as well.
Getting back to what Mr. Keenby said, could you, could you actually fence the, the pier off? Put a fence up on the land that was at the horse school?
There's a hoard, there's a, there's a hoarding on the, on the site at the moment. Um, and that was put, that was called forward because of the, because of like health and safety. Um, the, the, the property condition was so was so bad that it was, you know, that, you know, there was, there was, there was a risk of like
Could be, could be, hold it off, fence it off, fence the land off, just to keep it tidy.
Something that, you know, yeah, maybe it's something that when we talk about this meanwhile, it's maybe something that could think about. Because there's so many precedents out there around like, you know, things that work and, you know, wall gardens and wall player areas, wall seating areas. It's all something that we're and that, you know, that we're open to. It's gotta be low cost and it's gotta be, um,
It's issue of cost.
Cost and the, because it is gonna be a meanwhile use. So it's gonna have to be, it's gonna have to stack up as well as, um, is, you know, what you want. Yeah.
There have been more of the questions. And can I come through Stacy and to thank Carbon Homes for everything they've done in Stanley?
You're welcome.
Um, we move on to our next speakers. So we have Sam and Clay with us.
Hi. So I'm Sam. Those who don't know me, I'm from South, I'm a partnership. And coordinating the advice and country partnership. So I coordinate the delivery of advice services from to be beneficial for me to come along with you. So I know this needs some changes in the industry, just to kind of, you know, to clarify that confusion for some people. And so so what I wanted to do was kind of take us back. So, um, to look at what the objectives of the advice work was. And originally, it was to ensure that, um, the community gets that advice that we need. And to look at good practice work collaborative things and provide that in a long draw to advice, so that if someone goes in at one organised destination that can be referred seamlessly to another and get that right advice and support. And and making sure that everyone really works best together to serve the residents of Stanley. So in the advice hope and the venue of Stanley, we have got a service. So in twenty two, so just to kind of give a bit of background, so I know that we've got some new councillors clear. So in twenty eighteen, the Stanley Town Council let through its advice in County Durham to look at what could be delivered to the residents of Stanley. And at that point, citizens advice delivered three-day-reach money advice, so Claire's the manager of that service. Delivered a two-day week service. And at that point, it was at a cost of fifty thousand pounds per annum. And rentals, house, all parts within that pool of seven and a half thousand pounds per annum. In twenty twenty, decently suited for the cost of this year of admissions. So the rest of the service started delivering from the venue, which is, adds as your added value. So that's your funded service, what I've just talked about. That's what you're paying thirty thousand plus your seven and a half. These are the other providers that are delivering from that venue, who are housed by your rental, like you pay. And so we've got a feedback there three days a week. We've got AGK County Durham. And they were funded by themselves. Durham County Power Support, they're funded by themselves. So Gramworks, so they are now commissioned service by Durham County Services in County Durham. Previously, that was ice. There, there was a tender process that went out in May this year and Gramworks, who was successful. Bid. And so as for October, they deliver in a one-day exactly and also deliver appointments as well. So that's kind of like for like. We still have citizens advice there. They will be delivering the one-day-a-week. It's appointment only, it's certain energy. And that's funded by the money advice and pension service and the energy redress fund. We also have Durham by Right Service there, one-day-a-week, which is the only first first service across county. And they're funded by, what was the AP funded, and that's funded up since March. We also have Dash and Wayne Prey, where we're also funded by the same services. So that's kind of your added value on top of the service that you pay for. Yeah. That's just to clarify that funded, um, provision. Memory, which is, any questions, you know, we've got, we've got questions.
Carbon won.
Feeling of exclusion and vulnerability, or my right to remove them as they're currently stay, certainly does not represent my perspective.
Also, thank you for your letter. Um, does any councillor here wish to make a comment? We do. The town council does have a flat policy for flying our own flags, but not for flying, you know, anybody else's flags. Um, if any councillor would like to make a comment, question?
I completely understand where you're coming from, feeling scared by it. It definitely makes me feel a little bit afraid. And I grew up on an army base, surrounded by flags. It doesn't feel like a lot of these flags will come up to be about turning head, world exclusionary. Um, and I don't think if it had been prior to us displayed in the same way, that the county council position would be, you could just leave it unless it was Washington State in the bridge.
Are there any other councillors wishing to that, um, we take this to, um, our events and communities, um, committee, next committee. And we formally discuss this as a council and give the response to the gentleman for our letter. Um, and if anyone would like to add a personal comment to that response, then we will be able to.
How does it fit in with events?
It's events and communities. The committee is events and communities.
I just heard events.
Yeah, yeah, more events and communities is the committee. And I think that's the most relevant place to discuss it. Um, and come up with a corporate response of that. We move on to item ten. The conference of the minutes attaching the beep.
Good stuff, children. Now I'm making another two records.
Thank you. Thank you. And I have a second. We move on to item eleven, we've seen the committee minutes. For events and communities committee in fourth of June, events and communities committee is aligned to July. Allotments committee, course to in the HR, finance and general purposes. And I have a recommendation. Do you want to take them individually? Questions?
Committee, I just take them as law, they're in my heart, it's your days. Well, sorry, guys.
Thank you.
And we do, I've seen as different people along. And we'll take them as a whole, they're aligned different people along them and you're supposed to have attended the meeting to clarify one minutes.
Yeah, but that's.
And so the minutes are already being agreed on that particular.
Yeah, so we're trying, yes, but they have been proposed and seconded here. So are we all in agreement?
Yeah.
Yeah, agreed. We move on to item twelve, accounts in that bank reconciliation. So August twenty five, schedule of claim and schedule of receipt, bank reconciliation and bank balance. So that is C, D and E. How we.
Then can we take these all together, because they've already been for.
September as well. So you've got September, September five, federal payment, schedule of receipt, bank reconciliation and bank balance. So we are asked to note. And we have movements.
The movements, yes.
We moved on to item thirteen. Item thirteen is a recent update from the council's. Right.
We just speak on behalf of our individuals that are aware of this. And so we've got these strategic place plan that's still on the one at the moment, and then we've got the pride and place plan now as well. And the pride and place plan is obviously in the early stages at the moment, um, waiting for guidance from the government for that. And then D C C will be in touch with Stanley Town Council, we'll go from there. And regarding the parking at the Clifford Road Centre. So I think since they've built the new farm food store, I don't think an hour and a half of parking is enough. And especially over Christmas time. So I've tried ringing them, you can't get through to them on the phone. I've emailed them from the councillor email, it's bounced back, so we've had to handwrite a letter. So unless anyone knows any way of contacting them, the uncontactable.
Yeah.
Yeah. I have had to park in like.
Right. Um. It's still not many ones. I've had a walk around, um, Sleepy Valley, um, other places as well, but in Sleepy Valley, we noticed, especially when we were standing there. That the cars are flying through, so we're arranging at the moment, um, a speed watch with the police. So we're gonna try and get residents to do a speed watch there, um, and see how that goes. And we'll have the results from that, hopefully, see when lots of gets and residents. And and with the Christmas market, I was gonna say we're planning a surprise, but. I think that came out before, didn't it?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so. That's what I really, I don't know if I know that in the last, last. No.
Yeah, the car park, when my wife goes shopping in Stanley in her college drives. She parked there, how would she be on for all day parking, or was it inside?
At the Clifford, the Clifford Centre.
This one's a cliff at my.
Because it's where all bargains is.
Yeah, I know, I'm over the other side.
So.
Scott Street, I'm at.
So Scott Street, I've noticed in Scott Street as well, some people are parking.
And it was Newcastle.
Yeah.
Commute in Newcastle, but that's like, Stanley's empty and that's full, the car park's full. And soon it's gonna be done, but I'm only concerned about people that work in Stanley.
Yeah.
If you put a, a, an hour or two hours on, how, how are they, would they be able to get a pass for eight hours?
Don't know, we don't know what the.
Something.
Yeah, so we're currently looking at Scott Street because we have, we are aware of the parking.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
James.
Yeah, just add on that, um, I think with, if you're working in sort of the whole margins conference. There are little players that put your car reg on a sort of whitelist, so it doesn't pick up.
Right, yes, right.
But that's, I think that's only for people that are employed, but then that's retail park.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's the one I was on.
The normal practice is that you would put them on the whitelist where the registration wouldn't pick up.
I'm, I'm just moving that at Christmas time, especially, yeah, you know.
Yeah.
So we agree, you can spend easily over an hour in one park at Christmas time, so an hour and a half to do two shops.
Uh, just to the county councils, it might be general knowledge, but what else is going on there?
Don't know.
Because you've got the old council office and then we've got the, what was the bargain basement?
Yeah, I don't know. We haven't been taught.
Because obviously, if, if they are gonna be shops as well, potentially.
I think they're gonna be units, but I don't know what's going in there.
But if they are, it's gonna add to what you're saying, it's gonna add to the.
And I don't know what's happening with the, um, you know, the Argos key and stuff, I don't know what's happening. There was talk it was gonna be a car park, but.
Has the factory shop closed down? Yes.
Yeah.
No.
No, that's in the front.
That's going apparently.
They're not closing.
I see.
I don't think that one is.
Alright.
So that's good.
But obviously, as I say, if we can find out what, what is going on there, because if they are gonna be, or the shops, then it's surely going.
In, yeah, I think it does already with the all foods.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. Is it a rumor that the city hall is gonna be knocked down, maybe the car park, just, just talkers?
It's going through procurement right now, again, because the last, the winner of the last procurement round dropped out, so. It's had to go through procurement again, that's where that's at right now.
I'll see what happens then. Right, thank you.
Well, we're on about coparks in Stanley, Scott Street.
Yeah.
I know it's supposed, it's supposed to be free all day, but a disabled person can only pass for three hours. Just put signs on.
I think you're gonna have to take that.
I don't know, it's gone. Yeah.
Signs of that a disabled person can only.
But it's good parking though, so.
Yes.
Yeah, I see them saying, actually, you want to, you know, is that the ones next to serve them? Yes, I'd next to say, you've got three hours on that. We really love up for three hours, I think disabled, but all, all they've been off.
It's discrimination against disabled people.
And if I haven't looked into it.
And we would think, I asked a board and they just laughed, I asked them.
Yeah, I'll take it, especially for the doctors, are they, no, it's.
It's the ones down the bottom as well.
Yeah.
Near, um, where you can walk straight on to the, the back of pound, pound.
I'll have a look.
We put them all there as well.
We move on to item fourteen. Um, the, they'll give this has been sent to everyone. Can I just explain the process? The plan, we agreed that if someone wanted to bring a plan application. It was for consideration. And we would call a planning meeting. We will then call a planning meeting, and, and whoever's chairing that planning meeting will take the decision. To the council, the county council team and say that we have an rejection, we didn't have an objection, they send them a written statement as well. Someone could go along, just so we're all clear on the planning applications, we only, we only have planning meetings. If someone wants to call one, and then if you wanna call one about the planning issue, please call the one. We move on to item fifteen, and this is for members initiative fund. So we are asked to note the recommendations and approve from the committee. I don't think anyone needs to go out for this, I don't think it's a, um, a necessary thing.
Chat. They were just to know, because I have been. I was just gonna say which, I'm continuing with them, if anybody else is up to them.
Excellent. We move on to item sixteen, policy renewals and amendments, the council has to consider the recommendations. From policy and H R to approve the policies. So you have two policies attaching G and P. Actually, all. Red, C and P. Pointing out anything that you don't want, or that you do want. You will, yes?
Yeah, thank you. Having new two policies to clear streets, grants and it's the support. And it's evident that these policies cover all of them. I would definitely put calls up, we accept them.
No, second of. We shall have a country pause on the second, can I have a short thanks? That we will accept these policies. Thank you, that's unanimous. We move on to item seventeen. Um, a project workshop was held on the sixteenth of October twenty twenty five, there was presentation based project costs. And we had a number of lively debates. There are several recommendations. Following that project meeting, I hope you've all been seeing these. We are asked to note at this point, um, the three year projected budget position. Um, and we are, you know, the, the, the whole idea is the three years so that we can plan where we're going, what we're gonna do. But at this point, we are asked to note those recommendations. Can, can I, and I'll just explain this, councils, there is, there, there is a part that says we are asked to approve at the top. And to note at the bottom. If we approve these, if, when you have looked through these, because not all councillors were here.